Meeting with no board, please. Please stand for the flegelation. A flegelation.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to our meeting. All calls.
Paco.
Yes.
Battle.
Here.
Urban.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. The first thing on the agenda is the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget, and it's a public hearing. So the budget's been posted online for quite a while, several months, and it's in the agenda packet today, and so this public hearing will be to receive your comments on it. And so we'll have another part of the hearing for all other comments about all those things. But if you have anything you want to say about the budget, then when we start the public hearing, please go up to the podium, keep the three minutes, tell who you are, and tell where you live, and say what you want to say. So with that, the public hearing is now open. If you would like to make a comment, please approach the podium. Is there anyone online who would like to make a comment about the budget? Any more public comments? In person or online? Last call for public comments? Public hearing is now closed. Thank you very much. Next up is mayor's comments. So flood notifications. We've been getting alerts from FEMA. They've been very helpful. We've been trying to tell everybody as much as we can about ensuring that if you've been damaged by the flood, please go to the FEMA office, talk to the FDA people, and they will point you in the direction. Even if you're denied, you should still fill out the application because there's more help that that application might make you available for. That period of time is going to end on August 29th, after which you will not be able to apply. So if you want specific details on where it is, or hours, or anything like that, you're more than welcome to call City Hall. We try to post all of those notices on the city website, and on Facebook, and on Carbon Alert. We don't do the Carbon Alert page, but I'm pretty sure that that runs at the same time as ours. So if you have any neighbors who maybe didn't want to apply, please tell them if they had any losses at all, they really should apply. And they should talk to the people because the deadline is coming up, and we don't want anybody looking back and wishing that they did. So please help us in spreading that message and where that information is. Next thing is emergency procedures. So there's been some comments around the community that they should have done this or they shouldn't have done that with various issues, and both the city and the Carbon County Department of Emergency Services, we take your comments into consideration, and we talk about them. And because this is so fresh right now, if you have any comments at all, please let us know. I will pass on any comments to Carbon County Department of Emergency Services. You can get ahold of them, but we really want to know what your comments are for improving the procedure. As you know, every disaster is different, and so not knowing what that will be, we'll do our best. But if you have any comments, please submit them to us. You can call, write, send an email, whatever you like. The third thing is the city held an open house for Phase One of the sewer stormwater project. As you may have heard, the sewer stormwater project is to separate the sewer sewage from the stormwater system because that will lower our cost and extend the life expectancy of the wastewater treatment plant, and it will prevent us from getting fined. So...
Those are good things.
They're all good things. And so that, and on top of that, but after we rip up all the streets, it's going to look great. We're going to get new curb, new gutter. It's going to look just like a new place, and it's all going to start right down here. And we had a nice presentation from the engineer and Jim Bushnell, our director of public work, and they had nice, big displays of where the sidewalk will be, and how it'll look and everything. And that's probably going to happen for each of the five phases. But I have those boards in my office. I can get PDFs of what they are. I have a couple of those PDFs. But if you're curious about it, then please get ahold of us, and we'll make sure that you get the TV boards. And you can wait until we have another one. That's probably not going to be for a couple of years. I think they're going to try and bid this project out this fall, and construction probably won't start until next year. But it's going to be a pleasant driving around and driving over more rotten roads, but at the end, it's going to be beautiful. So hang in there, and if you ever have any questions, you're more than welcome to call us. Next up is the Summer Fest Review. We had a really great party on Sunday, and there was a lot of work that went into it. There was a lot of finding, and there was a lot of gussy requests to make that happen. And there was a lot of people that participated. There were a lot of new things that were tried, and so my hats off to those people that made it happen and to all of you who attended. I hope that they will try to do it next year, and we all hope that if anybody else gets any great ideas for more fun events, please don't hesitate to talk to a councilperson or look online at our events application, and we'll see how that goes. Next up is the pool has closed. Yeah, we're all very sorry about that. But you know, all the kids went back to school, and this was our first year with our new pool. And I don't know how many of you drove by, but I'll tell you, there were a lot of kids having a lot of fun in that pool. And it was glorious and wonderful, and it's ended. But you have a school advisory committee, and Lindsay and Judith are both on that committee.
And...
And he doesn't need it.
Oh, yes.
We're hearing four.
Thank you very much. Anita is on it also, and there's some other people that are on it too on the list. And yeah, I'm not sure that that's been updated lately on our website, but if anybody has any suggestions for what they'd like to see as a pool next year, then please get ahold of the school advisory committee, because next year, I think we'll be able to open a lot sooner, and it should be a lot more seamless with more trained lifeguards and more programs and things. All those details will be worked out this winter, so your comments are always welcome. Next up is MDOT flood repairs. So this is another big job. And they're doing a lot of work, and they're going to be trying to get it done as quickly as possible because of winter. And you can't see this, but this is basically from the 19th Street Bridge to the 308 Bridge. And they're starting right now, I believe they're starting on Friday, with some of the curb and gutters. But the plans haven't been fine tuned yet, but they're getting it done as quickly as possible. And so if you want to know what's going on with these repairs, again, please pay attention to the City of Red Lodge Facebook page, and we try to post these notices. This is by the public information office for the contractor, and they send them to us, and we post them on our website and on Facebook. And so, and you know, any of this stuff, you can always pop in and say hi, or call our office, and we'll tell you where to get this information. But a lot of times, people get frustrated because they want to know what's going on. But that's a, you've all seen the damage down there, and so that's a big project, and I'm delighted that they're getting it done. So thank you, too. MDOT. And that's... Oh, and this is in your packet, too. That's all of the mayor's comments. And so with that, we'd like to hear from you, the same rule of five. If you have anything to say about anything to do with city business, or anything preferably with city business, then please step up to the podium and keep it to three minutes. Tell who you are and where you live, and be courteous. And if you have a complaint, launch it at the city council in me instead of at your fellow citizens sitting next to you.
Question, I have some comments on 3607. Do you want me to wait until that's submitted?
No, please step up to the podium. We'd love to hear them.
Good, thank you. I'm Roy Peterson. I live on Upper Continental, and thank you, thank you for whoever initiated this project. I've been trying to kind of get my hands around it for two years and been running into roadblocks every time we turn around. There's a lot of VRVOs, and I think, first of all, we should call what it is, is VRVOs and not charter mills. These are three nights a week. In the summertime, they're constant. Unfortunately, I live on what was referred to as Party Row, which is Wedding Central at the clubhouse. So we have a clubhouse wedding every Friday or Saturday night all summer. This year is not as bad as last year. I forecast next year will be worse. It gets worse in that there'll be more weddings. And so I'm here representing four other residents on my street. I can see them. There are some troubling things. We have 17 houses in the golf course that are full-time, in my opinion, full-time VRVOs. We see the owners two weeks in the summer and at Christmas, and they live either someplace not in Red Lodge, or they live in Minnesota, they live in Vermont, wherever. We had two new houses built on Upper Continental, brand spanking new. Day one went into the VRVO rental pool. Never saw the owners, tried to find out who the owners are. I found one in Virginia Beach. I called them, I told them what I thought about building a house, two houses for me, and putting it into the rental. So I'm happy to see that maybe there's some work that can be done on occupancy. The number of cars that are in the driveway and in the street, I've had as high as nine, two houses for me. Owners in Fargo, I don't have time, I'll read you the response to my note to them. This was last year. About, well, we had 10 adults there, so you divide by two, and you get that many cars out in front. So that's the kind of thing that we get from the owners, if we can find them. Property managers, I've got one that responds well, that we can call. I like the new number that was presented a month ago. I've called it two times. We had a frat party done, a brand-new house on 1735 Layton. I've called it on the brand-new one, 7:30 in the morning, kids playing in a hot tub like it's a swimming pool. So there's a lot of issues. I know it's, if you look at, I can't believe there's 200 VRVOs registered in Red Lodge. To me, that's an astounding number, but that's what I heard one month ago when this new website was being put together. So anyway, I'd like to be, if I could, participate, and hopefully this committee, steering committee, will be approved later on, and I'd love to be able to be an advocate for the neighbor in the VRVO issues. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any more public comments on the floor?
My name's Lindsay Hoffman. I live at 178 East French Road, out of town a little bit. I'm on the Red Lodge City Pool Committee, and we just finished some of our major financial goals, and I just wanted to come up and say thank you to everybody who's helped in a long couple of years. We've been so excited to be swimming in our pool every day. I feel like I could probably thank my tan from the pool. And we are, our group's really excited to look forward to 2023. We have a lot of ideas on how to improve. I think that's always a good thing is when you're not at the bottom of the barrel, and you always have ideas on how to make things better. But our group put together some suggestions, and like Mayor said, we're always open for comments, and we get a lot of questions. I know the Facebook page, Red Lodge City Pool, has a lot of our community members asking questions, so taking documents, documenting that. But I guess, I don't know if I can hand these out to you guys right now, or if you want these emailed to you, but some suggestions our committee has got, but things we're going to work towards for 2023. And then if anybody has questions for us about the pool, about what we're working towards and what we're going to make happen, yes, thank you, guys. And it's good to see you all at the pool and all enjoying the pool.
Here, I can help. My arms are long, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add that we are so pleased to be able to see the pool in action. How many kids do we have at 102? I count 47 on average on two days a week, but we had even a higher number when it was really cold. It was so gratifying.
Can you see me?
Oh, I'm fine.
This is my mother-in-law.
I'm Judith Gregory, and I live out on the West Port Road. And I was vice chair of the committee to our wonderful chairman, Al Blumer, and Lindsay was on it. And so we were just so pleased to see the culmination of our efforts. And we are participating in Conrann, and our next project is to try to have a shade pergola for parents to sit under, which would be on the south end of the pool, near the shallow end where the parents are most often watching their kids. So we're still there. Our committee is slightly changed going forward, but we will still participate in trying to add amenities to the pool, and are just so very excited and showing concern. And hopefully, we will have some creative ideas to the lifeguard issue, since lifeguards tend to disappear even before our kids go back to school. So we have been thinking creatively about that. Just wanted to say.
Thank you.
Any more comments from the floor? Any comments online? All right, last call for comments. All right, moving on. Old business. We have an energy performance contract up for action. Courtney is our planning director. Courtney, would you like to tell us about the energy performance contract?
Sure. So a few months ago, we entered into an, or contracted to do an investment-grade audit, which is the first step in... So through the investment-grade audit, Karen came and presented to the city council on the findings, on what projects they would suggest, and what energy savings we would see recognized from those projects, and their payback period. So we're at the point now where we need to decide if we want to move forward with an energy performance contract or not. So you know, I just previously kind of typed up what those two options might mean for us. I did, as an update, I did talk to Karen again yesterday, and she did say that if we chose not to enter into an energy performance contract now, we could say we have five years, essentially, to enter into one. So if we don't have the funding now to do some of those projects, we could look for it, we could write grants, and then come back to them without having to go through a RFP process. So we have five years to be able to do that, so that is an update. But otherwise, you know, if there's, I know it's a complicated process, so if you have specific questions that you need, I'll let you ask me.
Thank you. May I have a motion? I want to approve the energy performance contract.
A second. All right. Discussion at the table. Does anybody have any questions, Theresa?
Yeah, Courtney, that's new development. So isn't it with the rollover? So if we don't contract with them now on a project, we aren't going to lose the $15,000 paid for the audit. We just, we have a five-year grace period to sort of initiate a project and then use that, right?
If we don't enter into the energy performance contract now, we still have to pay the audit now, and then we do have money to be able to move forward with the solar project without the energy performance contract. The main concern with entering into it is that a lot of those projects that we'd like to do that require really that third party. We don't have the money to help bring down that payback period at this point in time, but we have time that we can, we can find it.
Does anybody else have any questions about the energy performance contract or the program?
I just have a question. So is it, the way I read it, it's kind of an all or nothing, right? I mean, do we have to do all of the projects that are there?
So we can, that long list that was given to us, it's like a minute, we can choose from it, projects that you want to prioritize, and you can also add to it later.
So then what is the cutoff to be able to get back to $15,000 for the audit?
So the audit is done, and so, you know, if we enter into an energy performance contract now, we could lump that audit cost into it and pay it back through our savings. If we don't, we still have to pay for it because that's all the work that they did.
Right, but I meant, do we have to pick a certain number of projects that are a certain dollar amount?
No.
To be able to get the $15,000 applied? Maybe I'm not thinking of this correctly.
No, we can choose whatever project we want, and then go to add that on.
So could we just go through and maybe go ahead and, Sherry, pick the projects with the shortest payback right now, so it'd be most effective, and then be able to recoup our $15,000?
Well, we reviewed last month or the month before the different scenarios that they proposed, and there was one that had the lowest payback, because they set it up for us, and I believe that's the one we're looking at right now.
That's the one that makes the most, then, without any other additional funds to bring down that payback period for the other ones. But solar, we have a solar grant for the panels, so that's why that one's included, that we have the grant funding that we need to use.
Theresa, it sounds like we could move forward with that detriment, keep the projects from the EPC moving forward, and just, in my opinion, put the benefit right now to continue on with it, especially with the recommendations and things related to it.
My reservation about the going that direction is that realistically, the only thing we are going to do is the panel with the water treatment center, and we can do it ourselves for $55,000 plus the energy contract cost, the $15,000. And if we have them do it, it will be $120,000. So it will cost us $70,000 to go that route. And basically, if we go, if we do it on our own, we can still get 45 of the 60 panels and pay for, pay potentially $5,000 out of pocket. Because we're getting a $50,000 Northwest Energy Grant, and so we'll get that either way, but the costs of the energy performance company are built in because they'll be supervising it for a period of three years and administering the whole thing.
So that's the question, the trade-off is who's the "we" if we do it ourselves versus this company doing it, McKinstry.
Yes. Also, if we don't, we still have that $15,000 to pay for the audit period.
Yeah.
So it's not the case that it would just be...
Correct.
Right, so it would still be 70 if we go it all round.
We have to pay the $15,000, however, it's built into the payments that we would make. We won't actually see our energy savings because we'll be paying that to McKinstry. Courtney, your honor.
We're paying McKinstry regardless.
But we're paying them a lot more if they administer, if they...
Take the progress project.
And then they'll be getting us a loan. And there's just, it's going to cost us significantly more, whereas if we do it ourselves, it's, my figures are that it would only cost $20,000, 15 plus the buy.
If you can have the grant.
Yes.
Yeah, so the estimated cost that McKinstry gave us for that specific project was for a 60-panel unit. There is additional cost to that for McKinstry that's included in that, but it's because of the type of project it is, they are required by state to do engineering plans for it. Whereas if we just went to Sundance Solar and said, we'd like you to install these solar panels, it's not required to have those engineering plans. So it brings the cost down a lot more viewing it through the city, whereas McKinstry has their requirements for some of those projects where they would have to do additional engineering plans and sign off on it that aren't necessarily required for us to do. So that's a little bit of why there's a little extra cost involved in that. But with the grant, we're only required to match 10%, and so that's where if we decreased it to a 45-panel system and just did it through the city, you know, we could call at Sundance Solar and say, can you install it? We have the $50,000, we have the $5,600 to match matching funds, and we can get it done.
So I didn't understand that that was what was being recommended, and maybe I misunderstood reading through the letters from Sustainability, but is there a preference on the direction from the committee or not from that board?
So Sustainability Board, their vote was to move forward and enter into an energy performance contract.
With McKinstry?
With McKinstry.
And not hire Sundance Solar? I don't understand.
Sundance Solar would still be hired, but it would just be McKinstry.
Here we do.
It would be through a third party, not through us managing that project. And we would be able to get a loan and pay that back, whereas if we don't do a performance contract, we don't get the same loan, we can't do the, we can't set it up the same where we pay it off with energy savings in the same, in the same way.
Do you know what the difference is in energy savings with the 45 versus the 60?
I don't. That math was done, and I can't remember what it was.
We will get, out of 60 solar panels, by my figures, $23,700 kilowatts. Out of 45 solar panels, we'll get 17.78 kilowatts. But I mean, I think it's important to look at what the bottom line cost is going to be to the city for this project.
So we'll still have energy savings, I guess, is what I'm thinking, with the 45, without having a loan, because we've got the grant, and we have $5,600 or whatever.
Hey, that could be true.
Right. We'll get the savings right away. We're not giving the savings to...
Right.
So I guess what is the, you know, if the Sustainability Board wants, you know, is recommending that we move forward with it, what are the benefits of doing that? Because, and I guess, I'm assuming there are other projects that would then apply to, you know, other projects that we would, I'm reading, would have to figure out additional funding sources outside of this solar project at the water treatment plant. So what are the benefits of going with entering into the EPC?
The benefits would be that we would have a third party that's managing these projects for us. So that would take, you know, where we had an energy core person before that could do all of that, and they kind of already picked some of the easier ones that also have like big saving, like payback. And so we would have a third party that could manage some of these bigger energy saving projects for the city. And so, and then we would also have something, assistance in place where, you know, even if we have change-up in council and a new mayor, it's still going to proceed, and so it's not dependent on, you know, what the next council, how the next council feels about doing energy upgrades. So you have this kind of EPC with those types of projects.
So is there anything saying that if we do go into this EPC, that we have to pick McKinstry to do the water treatment plant? I mean, so when you say somebody else will be managing it, they would be managing, so if we didn't, then city staff would be managing it? Who would be the "we" in that?
It would be me calling up Sundance and checking in with them and calling Public Work as well.
I just like to reiterate, I wouldn't hire Sundance Solar to put it up there without an engineer, a structural engineer, looking at it and deciding how and what, how it'll go on there. I just don't think that's the way you do it.
And I mean, not having a structural engineer is the reason why we had to move it in the first place off of the PD building, because it wasn't going to go there.
because it was going to go there, but now it won't uphold it, so.
Yeah. And Carrie is a structural engineer, so she was able to quickly identify that.
Does Great West do the structural engineering?
They do have, yeah.
Because I don't think it'd cost seven thousand dollars.
That, I just pay a lot of, I love.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the additional cost of, of McKinstry, because the seventy thousand is not just for the engineering, but also for their three years of monitoring the project and making sure that the panels are working, that they're actually providing the savings that they said that they were going to. So there's, the seventy thousand is more than just the extra engineering.
I believe in their presentation too, they also said part of their role is to help us find additional grant money to support these projects as well and that they have connections with what that would look like.
I have a question on the money side of it. You guys have to get a loan to do all these projects because the city doesn't have the money sitting there to do these projects. So you guys have to think also, how is it, how are we going to pay for that loan? Where is that money going to come from? Until we start seeing savings, it's not going to be instant savings to pay the loan. So that's just something.
Does anybody remember the payback period for some of those projects?
It's always pretty long.
Some of them are actually, like here, pointing out, just code. They don't really save, you know, save energy, but we should do them just because they bring us up to code. And so that's, that's money too that we need to consider in the future.
But it also seemed like some of those were things that were doing before something, a piece of equipment ends alive. And I don't know if that's, you know, smart to do.
Typically, I mean, it sounded like they were going to pay it back with the energy savings, but the ones that there is no energy savings, it just happens to be done. Was, was it going to be a resort tax basically that would be paying for a lot of that because it's capital? Or depending on where it was going, it would come out of sewer or water, depending on what it was for?
Yeah, a lot of the projects that looked like were like City Hall and stuff.
And that's general. Well, you could, you could use resort tax, I guess, if it's the capital.
Not, no. No, City Hall was not included in any of those unless it's, or please, capital, but I don't think, like, like you said. I saw a lot of the projects where City Hall upgrades and stuff, which don't have paybacks. So you'd be happy to pay that in general. I don't know how to type that part of it.
Courtney, given the, I mean, I, I'm kind of surprised about the five-year grace period too. So, um, is, what are the consequences for tabling this until the next meeting in order to consider that we have a new option available to, like, timeline-wise? Is there?
Um, yeah, the sixty days is up the, at the end of the first week of September. Um, yeah, I mean, they, they've been, they've been very kind considering the flood, all the flood stuff and, and understanding. But, I mean, yeah, the five years, I mean, and that, that to me was kind of a, oh, okay, that's good to know because I feel we could do the solar project easily without entering. And there, you know, she's been very candid that, I'm not trying to encourage you one way or the other. I'm just letting you know that, like, you don't have to do these projects through an energy performance contract. And you can spend a couple of years to try to find grant funding and come back later and, and enter into it once you have, like, more of a pocket of funding to help bring down the payback period.
So if we don't enter into this EPC right now, who would put together this plan? For, you know, I, you know, to Jim's point, we need to hire another engineer to look at it, the bigger picture. Sundance Solar has a proposal in front of us. But we'd need to consider, you know, what, what type of loan or grant in addition, if we're doing this all on our own. Who would present that? I mean, now we've got to go back and scrub through, try to present that. I'm afraid of the inertia that it should go to fall on the floor and nothing will be done. Which is not even true. Just, there's too many balls in the air right now for the city.
Is there a deadline on the Northwest Energy grant?
Hmm, we're pretty far past that. They've also been very gracious at extending it for us. We really should get that done before we lose our ability to, you know, before winter hits or they're going to reallocate it.
I, I mean, I, I care that we make the right decision, um, rather than a hurried decision. I'm happy to meet, have a special meeting, um, if people need more time to think about it.
Well, what would we have different to examine by then?
Well, I'd like to know.
We don't have any comparison.
The cost of, um, having Great West do, do the engineering for it versus having, you know, what, what they would charge us if they did structural engineering for it without using, you know?
Would Great West have those same, um, uh, requirements upon them from the state that McKinstry does?
I'm not sure if those requirements from McKinstry are because they're through an energy performance contract.
Right.
Or if it's just because of, of being an engineering firm. I think the, the standards would be the same, but I don't know. The city going through it, we're not required to get a structural engineer. But McKinstry, because they are putting their butts on the line guaranteeing the savings they are required by the state. I think the standards would be the same. But to Jim's point, he, he would want to do it without it, so, without a structural engineering project.
Do you have concerns that, um, the structures wouldn't be sufficient to hold the panels?
No, I don't have concern that it wouldn't, but it still needs to be looked at and how it's mounted and how it's put on there. I mean, I don't know that it's a steel building, but like I said, an engineer needs to be involved in how their structure is mounted and how, you know, that they're not, you know, create a problem or have damages. I just don't think we want to do anything like that without an engineer, structural engineer saying, that's why they're not going here. You need to know for sure that, that.
I think we need to consider that we're also building a partnership with, with a company that can be auditing as well and can help us with the grant. I just, I try to look at the balance of all of this, the benefits as well as the costs.
So I guess that would be the one piece of information that would be new. You know, if we were to, you know, delay and meet about this again, would be what another company, engineering firm?
And then who, who would do the, who would do the implementation, the management of the project? That's the big one. If we're, if we're thinking that's going to be on Courtney's place, it's, yeah, again.
The estimate from Sundance Solar, um, I've been verbally told, um, that he, he, he provides that for five years. That's something that, you know, you'd want to clarify because I don't want to lie after some, um, verbal representation. But, um, whereas the monitoring of McKinstry would provide the last for three years. They would also be using Sundance Solar.
I'm honestly good any way we choose. It did like the new five-year option to be able to, you know, still jump on the, the solar projects by halftime. You know, we have our Resiliency Corps member starting, has started, she started Monday. She could be also someone that can look into getting potential funding options. And we can use McKinstry, you know, within that five-year period. But I'm, I think I'm honestly okay any way we, any route we choose.
And I would add that McKinstry has been, I mean, you've watched the presentation that they provided and, I mean, they've been lovely. I, I would look forward to, if we did choose to not go with them. I appreciate the work that they did to show us what options we have to improve our sustainability. And, I mean, they've been very open about what options we have and that they offered their support so we can find what are we doing.
Sorry, from a practical perspective, if we, if we are interested in going the five-year option route, that would mean not entering into an energy performance contract today.
Correct.
And then that fifteen thousand that we paid for the audit would sit there and would still be, like, we wouldn't have to pay again for another audit in a couple of years.
Right, right. We would pay for this audit and it's good for five years.
And in the meantime, we can perhaps chat with the Sustainability Board and think about using some of that time with Resilient Corps members to find other grant money to support those other projects and then go forward with, with the solar panels on the water treatment plant as an isolated option. Those are all things.
Yeah, and I, I totally understand the, and agree with the not wanting to lose the inertia. And because there are things that I've seen that, you know, as soon as a, a one staff member leaves, projects that were important to them that, you know, rely on someone else to carry them on get dropped. So I don't want that to happen. I just also don't want to enter into something early on, not able to do as much as we want because we don't have that grant money to be able to do all those bigger projects that really should get done. But I know I don't have time to manage all of that, so.
I guess I would just wrap up and say, from an admin, like, from a budget perspective, that what, if we decide to move forward today, that loan is not written into our 2022, 2023 budget. And so that's just an added.
It's a pain, wait another year, like, right?
I agree with you. Is there any further discussion? Well, I guess, uh, the motion is to, um, accept the energy perform, we, we have a motion to approve or enter into the energy performance contract. And then following this discussion, I guess, we need to decide whether or not we do that. But I, I, I had heard the image. If anything, I want to, no. So we will proceed with the roll call then. Battle?
No.
Kreteli?
No.
Durbin?
No.
Eaton?
No.
Ronnie?
No.
Whitlock?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Um, new business. Resolution number thirty-six-ten, approving and adopting the final budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. And it's up for action. Jen, would you like to add to that?
That is me. Yeah. So, uh, sorry, I got distracted by, why that previous vote? Um, yeah, so I am going to move to approve, uh, resolution thirty-six-ten, adopting the final budget for, for year 2022, 2023.
One second.
Um, yeah, been out there for a while.
Thank you. Uh, do you want to tell us a little bit about, do you have any more with this ten?
Um, uh, thank you to everyone who had input on the budget. Thank you to all of the department heads. Thanks to the council for, um, participating in a bunch of meetings up till now. It is, it's a, it's a tight budget. And I think that that's just something that we need to acknowledge. And, and the other thing I would say too is, um, the admin committee met this morning and talked about how we're just really clear that, um, the size of the general fund pie that we have is not, is no longer sustainable to uphold what the city needs to run. And so we're passing this budget knowing that we're going to have to explore options to grow that general fund pie in the near future. And I would defer to Jovi and Pete if they want to add anything.
No, it's just our, our growth is out, uh, is expanding quicker than our revenue and we're going to have to seek another source. And that'll either be at this table or at the ballot box.
Any other comments?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the way the resolution was written and the demonstration of the, the sources demonstrates that point exactly. And I think it's, it's very poignant. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I would just add, we talked to admin a lot about how, um, everyone needs to realize that the resort tax money cannot be used to run the administrative part of the city. It does not pay any of our police officers, it does not pay any of our city staff that work in the office. So we've all counted on that resort tax to fix the city by for the last twenty years and, you know, in other areas. But it, it's come to the point where the general fund is just not covering the expenses it needs to cover. And it will be a conversation in the standing committee, so please, you know, look for those. They're open to the public and we welcome comments and participation during those. It's not just three minutes where you talk and we say nothing. It's the back and forth and it's a really good conversation. So please participate as much as possible.
Any further comments on the resolution? Roll call?
Battle?
Yes.
Kreteli?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Whitlock?
Yes.
Next up is resolution thirty-six-twelve, approving the use of home funds for cares homes. And Lonnie knows about this, so Lonnie, would you like to tell us about this?
You missed thirty-six-eleven.
Did I? Oh, I'm sorry about that. Thank you. All right, next up is thirty-six, resolution thirty-six-eleven, adopting updated building related codes. Next up for action is Lonnie again, is our appointment.
Do you want to get a motion and then you talk or you want to talk?
I move to approve resolution number thirty-six-eleven.
One second.
So all this is, is just, um, our building department has to adopt, um, like every year, every other year, the state will do, update their codes. So the smaller communities have to then, if we don't have our existing codes, we have to adopt the state. So that's just a formality to accept the state codes or adopt the state codes that they've changed for our building department.
And it is a good idea to go with the state or the international building code? Because we don't have the expertise to have our own.
Nope. I'm just curious, do we know what the, what the biggest changes are between two thousand eighteen and twenty-one? What, are there going to, will, will we hear people, will there be any flack about any of the change? I don't, you know, no.
No.
Most of the builders are going to look towards, they, they want to know what code that we're using and they appreciate it if it's the most that's today.
Time to buy those new expensive books.
Yes, they're online, yes, they're online.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Battle?
Yes.
Kreteli?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Whitlock?
Yes.
And now we have resolution thirty-six-twelve, approving use of home funds for cares homes. May I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number thirty-six-twelve.
One second.
Okay, so this one is just, um, just a community foundation. They got CDVG block grants for the cares homes that aspire for, to create affordable rental housing. So they've been working on this. And this resolution is requesting the funds that we have, um, they're called home funds. So I don't, there was a program quite a few years ago that helped people purchase homes. And so they got a certain amount, they applied, they got a certain amount of money. But in the stipulation, if they sold their homes within the fifteen years or, some were ten, some were fifteen.
It depended on how much they got.
They got, yeah, so it just was, just depended. But if they sold it within that timeframe, they have to give back the city a certain portion of that money that they receive. So, um, we used to have to. So we used to have to give it back to the state. Then the state's like, nope, we raise, keep the money. But it could only be used for certain things, so for homes and stuff. So this eighty thousand is actually payback from people selling their homes that were involved in that home program. So this resolution is just releasing those funds to the community foundations for the CDBG grant to use for that housing project.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So do we know specifically which, what project is it that they're speaking about under cares homes? Do we know?
Is it the short, is it the owner-built housing? The owner-built housing or the ones that are for long-term rentals?
Affordable rental housing. Affordable. Okay. It's the newest project. Well, it sounds wonderful. And I know when the city accepted these money back in home funds, it was only around fifty-four thousand or something and now it's up around eighty. So this is wonderful.
I mean, unless we want to get into the market of building affordable for first housing, I think that the CDB foundation is.
This is a nice gift, a nice move.
Any more comments at the table? All right, roll call. Battle?
Yes.
Kreteli?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Whitlock?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is Resolution thirty-six thirteen, resolution of intent to apply for flood mitigation funds.
I move to approve Resolution number thirty-six thirteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Courtney, do you want to tell us a little bit about?
Yeah, I can get some background. So this hazard mitigation grant program has, is, is through FEMA ultimately. And it's been around for decades to assist municipalities and counties with buying properties or helping with any mitigation. So they have this for floods, fires, any natural disaster, after natural disasters. A state can get funding and then they administer it to municipalities and counties. So, you know, we've, we've been talking with a few property owners. One, one property, the Bastions property, which received, you know, some of the biggest hits from the flood. We've been chatting with them about doing a buyout for that property. And it would become city-owned land and we would turn it into green space. So we would work with state DES with that, getting the appraisal, kind of getting an estimate for how much that would cost, how we're gonna do our twenty-five percent match. And then once we can get that application through, hopefully we can work towards turning it into green space and extra buffer for Rock Creek to do what rivers do without creating damage to infrastructure and home and property. To me, that's important because we did lose a lot of our, especially our Ritter's Park. We lost a lot of property up there. You know, and over the last hundred or so years, a lot of properties, you know, were built maybe when they weren't in jeopardy of being flooded or, you know, just standards were different back then. And so a way that we can, you know, pay for, you know, the property value, pre-flood damage in a way of relieving some of those burdens on the property owners too when they're already weighing a lot of loss and options.
Thank you. Any questions yet?
Yeah, so Courtney, I know we spoke earlier at the committee meeting about this opening the door to additional applications in the future. We have, you know, people that might take some time to think about it. And this, this is the vehicle that opens that door. If it's specified here that the land acquired would be used for green spaces, is that only for green spaces or can it be used for other things? Because this is very specific.
It's only for green spaces. You can do some amenities in these green spaces. The whole purpose is that you're not putting anything in there that would increase the base flood elevation for other surrounding properties. So you could do picnic tables. This is the DES. I've been for the last couple of years really wanting to find a place for an ADA fishing pier. And so that's something that they're also really excited to try. And whether it's this property or not, just different things, amenities that we can add to our green spaces that are approved by FEMA through this program.
Four and six. Would a tree nursery ever be allowed in a green space?
Likely, yeah. I think that would probably be very beneficial.
For example. And that's something maybe that the planning board could tone, tune up within the regulations for green spaces specifically along flood plain. I don't know if further definitions needed or not, but I'm just.
Trees are green.
Yeah. I like.
Any more, any more questions, your comments?
So I just add to, so there's this, the Bastion property is the one that we've been talking to. DNRC has been out there and chatted with the property owners. State DES has been talking with them. We have talked with other property owners. So there will be another round of funding that will be administered to the state next year. So it's, it's a longer term. Both states have some extra funding to help Sebastian more immediately. And we can also use that as, as an example for other properties that are still weighing their options. They're not ready to make a decision yet, which is okay. But, you know, this might be a way that we can kind of show how the process works and what's involved in it and if they choose to go that route. It's all voluntary and it may not just be property buyouts that we use funding for. We can use it to raise buildings that are in the flood plain or move buildings back. So there's lots of different things we can use the grant money for. Acquisition is the main, the main way that it's been used over the last several decades.
Comments or questions?
Thank you for doing all of that research and all the work that's been done.
Really quick question. So this twenty-five percent match, that can be through non-federal services?
It can be through non-federal grants. So block grants can be used for in-kind services. And the DNRC, they have lots of examples, especially after the Muscle Shell County floods. They have lots of examples of how other communities met those matching grants without actually having to apply dollars to it.
Great.
We've also talked about having little bake sales. So there's lots of ideas out there. We don't have to.
Great. Thank you.
All right, no further comments and we'll move on to roll call. Battle?
Yes.
Kreteli?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Whitlock?
Yes.
Next up is Resolution thirty-six zero-seven, resolution of intent to create this short-term rental advisory committee. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
One second.
Sherry says you want to tell us about?
Yeah, so, so this is something that Kelly and I had begun working on earlier before we had standing committees. But we moved the idea of creating this, this short-term rental advisory committee forward. It was canceled, you know, in the six-fourteen council meeting because of the flood. We took a pause. The idea here is to address any of the concerns that have been discussed through the past couple of years truly through the housing committee, short-term housing committee, and other comments and concerns that have come through residents, residents to council. So what we'd like to do, since we did already adopt the, the current zoning regulations, we just, this will drive a revisit of that section addressing short-term rentals to see what improvements can be made and recommended to the planning board. It gives the planning board an opportunity to address and consider those recommendations from people that either have directly been involved in researching short-term rentals or have different ideas or concerns. Just meant to kind of move that whole thing along with some good foundation behind it, especially from the foundation and the good work that's been done with people there. The only things that we've made to this as a standing committee since this was introduced was changing the dates that are now relevant in, in moving it forward as well as the introduction of the standing committee's role in relation to the advisory committee and the planning board. So that's, that's what we have. It does also introduce that, you know, of course, the city is, is working on issuing the, the stop order for any short-term rentals that are non-compliant. So that, that's one component of this. And then I think that covers everything. Can I ask you a quick question?
When you say you're doing a stop order on the ones that are non-compliant, I thought, we had sent them a letter asking them to be compliant.
September first, right?
They were supposed to be sent out September first.
You mean July?
No, they, they already received, a lot of them received their letters already because I've gotten inquiries and stuff like that and whatnot.
Okay.
But, I mean, saying that they were operating short-term rental and they weren't compliant and they needed to, what they needed to do is become compliant.
So it'll be a follow-up letter saying it's now time for you, that you are no longer compliant. You need to be.
Okay, so that's, that's what I was, right, it's a separate letter. Okay, so this is like a C thirty-six letter?
Yeah. The second, the second round that they haven't been sent out yet.
Right.
Okay, so that's when we had the Gabby, the presentation from Gabby. She mentioned that those letters that go out September third were compliant.
The, the letters that say.
That say you can't operate any more.
Oh, right. Okay, so she sent out, the city sent out like a friendly letter saying, okay. And people, this is the second letter again. I was just trying to make it better.
Right.
So after that second letter, can they then register? Or are they just done and they're out of chances?
They can sue right.
Okay.
And then I just had one other question because we just created these standing committees that were going to do the work of council during these committees. I guess I didn't understand why we were actually forming a separate committee when we just formed our standing committees to do these types of things. Because they would all be public meetings that people could come to. My, my only concern is that you're forming another separate committee from the standing committees and they can probably meet without public notice.
So, so Jody, we did discuss that. And, and the idea was that there's, there's a set of people that have been working and researching this for some time. And rather than us trying to create the wheel on a standing committee without the background knowledge and without the participation, the, the organized participation of residents that we know are interested in moving this forward, it would take us a lot longer. What we're trying to do is, is really find, find some good recommendations that can be advanced to the planning board to save them, you know, the work of it as well because they're still hearing a number of different applications. And they had already just approved or forwarded the zoning regulations. So they said that they would revisit that, but they've also been inundated with other things. So it's in the interest of getting this addressed. The work of the committee, that the foundation at least has been talking about this for some time and is ready for action. So we're welcoming them in as, as an advisory committee that can, can, you know, really move that forward, working with the standing committee and the planning board. It's just, it's just, it's gonna take a group of three people that are already addressing a number of other issues for the city so much longer to start educating themselves and coming up with those recommendations. We've already got the expertise out there.
Jody, I think there's a section in here that really gets to your point, which is that the advisory committee is gonna research, discuss and draft those recommendations and bring them to land use and planning. So it will still come in front of a publicly announced meeting, multiple times in fact. Because it will also go to the planning board.
Yeah, because then it will go to the planning board after that. But yes, there was lots of conversation about the fact that if the standing committee didn't put this on, it would be our main thing for, I don't even know, three months. I don't, I mean, we.
We would repeat the work that's been done by the other committees for over a year.
There's a whole list of, just like, I'm sure in your committees, there's tons of things on the list to do.
I have a question. I'm just a little bit, maybe because I don't know the background. Can you go over what the, what the actual goal of this is? Is this to restrict short-term rentals or? We don't know what those recommendations will be. But what is the problem you're, I'm just trying to understand. So what's the problem you're trying to solve there?
The way that I would frame that is to say that the zoning regulations that we passed earlier this year does not address the short-term rental issue that is facing the community and that we regularly get feedback from residents on. And so the idea is to put that section of the, of the zoning rights back to planning board, but with some research around what other communities like ours do and how they address short-term rentals as a way to spark that conversation to provide, so that, so that planning board can come back to this council with recommendations for zoning changes.
And it's to a date, sir, because we don't want this lingering as it has been. I mean, it's, it's truly been lingering. I don't, I don't know how many other people are approached by the public about short-term rentals. But it is truly something that we want to have addressed sooner rather than later. And the, the planning board as well has been asking for direction from state council. So this gives direction.
But I think it's important to say that there's no preconceived notions of what it's going to, what these recommendations are going to be. But the recommendations are going to be based on a lot of research, a lot of best-known methods that other cities are, how they, how they manage their short-term rentals.
I guess maybe I'm just missing, what problem are you trying to solve? I guess that's.
Let me try to answer that.
Okay.
There are various points to this. But what I'm not hearing tonight is what I did hear today at the standing committee meeting. And what I heard today at the standing committee meeting was workforce housing. Workforce housing, workforce housing. And I heard it three or four times. Make no mistake about it. The end goal of this resolution is to reduce and stymie short-term rentals in favor of workforce housing. No matter how you paint this, that is the agenda. And I cannot support it.
That, that might be an outcome, but it's clearly stated within this resolution that it's to protect public health, safety and welfare and to maintain the neighborhood, the nature of our neighborhood. We don't want to become a virtual hotel.
And, and I'm not questioning that. But what I am questioning is when you take away people's personal property rights by legislating them to have, to have a reduction in their return on income. And that's exactly what this is.
Jen? I guess I'll just say from my perspective, you know, when we passed the zoning regulations this spring, what I was hoping to see and what I think this is coming in front of council is a way for the planning boards to have information and added expertise so that they can re, they can look at the zoning rules as a tool for this community to address the question of what is the appropriate amount of short-term rentals for our community? And they're absolutely setting aside workforce housing. That workforce housing is not in this resolution language-wise. And I, and to your point, I think it would be important to make sure that those two things are, continue to be delineated when we, when this discussion goes forward. But my point, or the, what I see is there is research that shows that any community, this community or any, once it reaches, reaches a certain threshold, the number of percentages of homes that are not fully occupied, not occupied X number of days a year, that that community suffers. And, and so what I see is that this is an option. This is a way for our community to instruct the planning board and give them the tools, the resources they need to be able to look at the zoning rights and say, is this a tool that we can use for the community to, to discuss and also address what is that figure? What is the appropriate amount of short-term rentals for a community like ours that's tourism-based and all these things? But also that, make sure that the people that live here have, have an IDA to go to and have a hardware store to go to because you need a certain number of people who live here full-time. I mean, tourists are not going to come and change their tires here, right? So, so I, in my mind, I get your point about making sure that we don't muddy the waters and using this as the only vehicle to address workforce housing. But I think that there's other things at play here. And I think that this is the way that we need to encourage and support the planning board in addressing short-term rentals in our town.
Do we have anyone here from the board? No, but we had Roy. Jeff. Jeff.
Any further discussion? If you'd like to hear from the planning board, we can see if Jeff would like to offer a...
There was one, our discussion today around this really was about making an amendment, a motion for the approval with the amendment that we relax the makeup of the advisory committee. We may not get two members of, you know, of these groups that would want to or are able to participate. So really, we just wanted to say this, making a motion to approve with amendment the Resolution 3607 with a change to section number six. And it reads that number one, formation of a short-term rental advisory committee as reported by the mayor would comprise a minimum of five members and no more than seven with at least one city councilperson, one planning board member, one workforce or short-term housing member, and preference given to city residents for additional membership. And that participation of the city's planning director may be requested if necessary.
And is there a second for the...
Second.
Motion of the amendment.
When you say the short-term rental housing committee members, who exactly is that? I just want to be clear on who that person or persons would be.
Well, they would, so the resolution outlines how this application...
No, I know, I'm not saying who would they be. I'm like, how do you fit that criteria? Is it like a property manager, Aaron Jones, or is that a...
We have, there's a, there are a number of people already involved in those committees over the foundation, workforce housing, and or the short-term rental. They would be welcomed to apply.
So I guess, what are the... Please, I'm sorry. I just didn't understand the definition of who fits that criteria.
Someone that's already participating in, been in one of those groups today.
One of the short-term rental housing committees. There's two of them.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
So we have...
Short-term housing. I'm sorry.
Can you have any, can you explain what the committees are, the two separate committees? Yeah, so the committees are currently active. We decided to use the committees after zoning was approved. We did do research that we're happy to present to the board. Foundation staff, if a committee member is interested in applying, they're welcome to, but foundation staff at this time are not able to participate in this board because we're still onboarding Angela. So, but we are more than happy to provide the information that, you know, was already discussed in the committee. We have a short-term, a long-term, and then the general housing committee and a home ownership committee. Does that answer your question?
Yes. I just didn't know. Yeah, there's committees.
Yeah, and for the short-term rental, it was equally split between residents and renters and property managers, because that worked for, you know, our local property, short-term rental property manager. So it was bipartisan, if you will, on that topic.
Thank you. That explains it. I had just, I had no idea who that was.
Does council need any further information or discussion? All right, roll call.
Yeah. We don't, sorry, are we going to roll call on the menu?
I have a motion.
Cortelli?
No.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
No.
Whitler?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is standing committees. So standing committees are new and I've attended most of them this morning. And so I think that at this point, we'll have a brief synopsis from each chair about whatever, the synopsis of where they are and where they're going or whatever else they find appropriate to mention. I don't believe we need to comment on these things, but you're all welcome to attend the standing committee meetings. And the minutes are being posted with the agenda for this.
The agenda's right in front of us. And then when I start getting minutes, we'll start posting as well.
All right, thank you. So first up is administration and finance, which met at 8:00 AM. And Terry, are you the chair?
No, Jen.
Jen?
Yeah, thank you. So Pete, Jody, and I met this morning and the three main topics of discussion were obviously our bill of budget resolution, which we just passed, thank you. We're also looking at the draft recycling budget and also reviewed Terry's suggestions from last meeting on what passed from the event discussions and committee admin should be taking on. And we, I think we prioritized the event application as the first order of business on that list. And so look for those things in the near future. Thank you.
Next is public health and safety. Terry?
That's Jenny. Yeah, that's me. So we actually had our kickoff meeting really today because Kelly was there and we also identified the chief there. So we pretty much, I did a little bit of a report out just to let people know because we brought it up earlier today on the emergency response or what we can do to help our police officers and our fire departments identify different residences within our community as far as having, you know, addressing more, addressing on the buildings more visible. So anyway, that's going to tie in. I'm going to also work with Carbon Alert to see what kind of things, as the mayor talked about earlier, what we can do to put in place so that we're more prepared next time there's an event, which we hope will not happen in the near future. The other thing, let's see, one of the things that we're talking about, obviously the events, we're looking to the items that we think are under the purview really of public health and safety. We're looking at those and we're prioritizing those and coming up with some checkoff lists that we're going to be working on. The other thing is we're also going to be looking at grant opportunities for the police department and one of the key areas for that is the resource officer. So we're going to be looking at that and how we can partner with the board, Board of Education or whatever on that. And then the other thing, because everybody knows how much I love spreadsheets, I'm going to help with data reporting. So he's done a great job with the tabular or actually those in your list and stuff. So see if we can put that maybe in an Excel spreadsheet and do some graphs for people that like visuals, so. That was about it for that one.
Is that revenue for that committee?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next up is land use and planning.
Teresa? Teresa, yeah. Yeah, so I'll be acting as chair and secretary for this group along, working along with Kelly and Jen. Courtney was there today and we're mayor and city attorney in the audience. We had a number of items today that were the highest priority that were drafted and cited actions on. The first one was basically just a simple drafting of our chart that we can include in the, in the agenda minutes so that the public understand what types of matters this group is looking at. The next set of items that we were looking at were creation of the North Entrance URD Advisory Committee or the agency that would be formed to review eligibility as well as the types of monies that could be made available to different projects in the URD. Everybody might, may not recall, but the URD was passed, I think it was March 2022. And in that ordinance, was it 956, we declared that we would create this URD agency or committee for that purpose. So we'll be posting very near future the invitation for people to send letters of interest as that, so that they may be appointed to that agency. Then the next thing to do was we want to work, collaborate with the foundation on establishing emergency housing and basically a couple of different ideas kicked around. I won't go into detail with those right now, but that's something that Courtney will follow up with Gabby and I'll follow up with the foundation on. And then we talked about the SDR resolution amendment that we just discussed here. And then for code enforcement, along the same lines as the SRO, code enforcement is necessary. That's another one of these things that the public has been bringing up to council immensely, that we need code enforcement. So we would like to also begin work on grants for that. And Jen offered to take the lead on investigating the grant possibilities of cost. And then what was the other thing? I guess that's it for the most part, but we also have, oh, Jen also volunteered to initiate research for the Main Street program, any grants that are available there that can help the city with dressing up and sipping up Main Street. Especially at this time where you said you learned that they would be more likely to award cities that have been impacted by disasters.
It's possible that they're going to focus their awards for Main Street affiliates, of which Red Lodge is one on flood relief.
That's wonderful. And then that's about it. We have a register of about 27 items that we're going to be tracking, but those are just the most immediate ones that we're trying to gain some traction on.
Thank you. Public Works?
That's me again. So we met today and unfortunately Jim wasn't there because he's our wealth of information, so I'm going to meet with him on Friday. And so I think I mentioned before that I keep this list of public works capital improvement projects for 2022. So I think the last one got posted in the meeting minutes. And now that two weeks has passed, a lot's been going on, so I got to get all the updates from Jim on that. One of the things again, that, over a couple of things I think that are still really important to us is one, Jim said that the best use that we could be for him is helping to communicate what's going on in public works and have that information. So we'd like to work with the mayor and with the staff to make sure that we can update the Public Works webpage and answer maybe common questions. So that's one thing we'd like to work on. The other thing we want to do too is make sure we understand what grants are going to be available now that we've had the disaster. And we know that we already have Ray West that works, Chad apparently works on a lot of that stuff. So we'd like to learn more where his space is on that and if there's areas that we can fill in to make sure that we were aware of all the different opportunities.
As far as the grant, believe me, we are on top of every grant available through CLOs or any of the things going on through the state. That's one thing we've been on top of.
Good. So we just want to make sure we're up to speed too so that we can be of any help as we go forward. And then I guess the last thing, again, looking at the events, recommendations or considerations to see what kind of things, like doing the checkoff list for public works and for the applicant along those lines. So we're going to be working with Jen and trying to get that together so we have everything very prescriptive on what needs to be in place for that.
Thanks, Terry. If there's any correspondence, it's included in your packet. And with that, if I could add a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.